Ms. Jones.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Our work session for July 22nd, 2025 is now called to order at 6:45 PM. Roll call.
Ms. Foster.
Present.
Mr. Conover.
Present.
Mr. Hikes.
Present.
Ms. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Marston.
Present.
Ms. Hubbard.
Here.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Present.
We have a call.
We move to removal of the minutes. Need a motion on the floor. 10.1. Approval of the minutes for our regular business meeting.
Point of order, are we skipping over item nine?
I'm sorry, I didn't even see that, I'm so sorry. Approval of the agenda. I need a motion on the floor.
I move to approve the agenda for tonight's work session.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
No.
Mr. Hikes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Marston.
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard.
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 10, approval of the minutes. July 8th, 2025, regular business meeting. Motion on the floor, please.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 8th, regular meeting. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Hikes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Marston.
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard.
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 10.2, approval of the minutes for July 14th, 2025, special board meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the July 14th special board meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Hikes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones. Mr. Marston.
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard.
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 11, superintendent's reports, item 11.1. And 11.2.
Thank you and good evening. Preadings, President Collins Adams, Vice President Hubbard, and members of the board and our listening audience. For 11.1, SLPS has been grateful for the support provided by the SLPS Foundation despite the fact that we have been without an MOU for several years. On February 25th, 2025, during an SLPS work session, the SLPS Foundation was in the process of explaining the MOU and ran into technical difficulties. Once our general counsel was hired in March of 2025, one of the things I asked her to do was to review the MOU. She has reviewed the MOU, it has been shared with the SLPS Foundation, and now we're at the point to sharing it with the board. During the work session in 2025, there were a series of questions that were asked by the Board of Education that were not answered. I will ask those same questions this evening and provide SLPS Foundation with an opportunity to respond and for you to ask additional questions. At the conclusion, I would then ask that the item be moved to the consent agenda for a vote during the August 12th board meeting. At this time, I would have SLPS Foundation.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you turn on the mic? In the very front, tap the red button. The white button. There we go.
Thank you.
And so there were a series of questions. I'll let you introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Halliday Douglas, president and CEO of the St. Louis Public Schools Foundation. Also in part a proud alum of St. Louis Public Schools. I attended Row Elementary for fourth grade, Ashland Elementary for fifth grade, and Bunch International Studies for sixth through eighth grade before heading out to the county for high school.
I'm sorry. Okay. What does the SLPS, the question was, what does the SLPS Foundation do?
Yes, important question. We raise about two points, between 2.5 million and five million dollars a year to fund programs that support. We raise about two point, some between two point five million and, and five million dollars a year to fund programs that support S L P S students each year. We also host about a hundred and forty plus donor designated funds. These funds are, for instance, P T O organizations and alumni associations who want to give back specifically to their school community. And so they set up a fund with the foundation to, say, provide scholarships to a student at Feshan or provide field trip experiences for a student at Sticks. So we host about a hundred and forty of those specific funds. We do not fundraise for those funds, we just host them, which allows for outside organizations like a P T O or an alumni association to give to the benefit of the district and district students and also get a tax break from it, a tax deduction for that.
Thank you. The next question, what is the foundation's organizational structure?
Right, so we are independent five oh one C three, governed by an independent board, and the day to day operations of the foundation are managed by me, the President and C E O.
What are, who are our founders? Now, who are your funders?
Our funders are individuals, you know, larger organizations of various sorts, charitable foundations who believe in kids, believe in traditional public education, believe in S L P S.
Superintendent, would you like us to ask questions related to these questions in the middle or at the end?
If you have questions now, I'd like to take them down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's related to the one you just asked, so that's why I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yes, in relation to the funders, that's quite general, could you be a little bit more specific, especially in relation to Saint Louis area foundations that may be contributing to the foundation?
So we have every year, every year, and if you go online, you can see, we have reports, an annual report that actually outlines every funder, every individual funder at a certain point, so that, that information is available, do you have a specific foundation you're looking for?
I'm curious about the Saint Louis Community Foundation.
Yes.
Thank you.
But just to clarify, the Saint Louis Community Foundation also has donor designated funds, so they actually don't necessarily fund things. The families that give to them fund S L P S, like, so right now, we apply for a grant from a found, like a family fund that's hosted by the foundation, by the Saint Louis Community Foundation. That foundation or that family pays for pre K professional development opportunities, so it's, it's.
I'm just making sure I understand, yeah, so.
Understood, okay.
We apply for a grant from the community foundation that then goes to fund pre K development for teachers in those.
We apply for a grant from the Pettis Foundation.
Okay.
Their money is housed at the Saint Louis Community.
I see, that's helpful, yep, thank you.
Any additional? How are fund, how are foundation funds spent?
So funds are spent, essentially, the foundation writes a grant in partnership with the district or about a priority area we care about. A good example would be early college, and so we'll write a grant, we'll figure out if that's something that synergizes with the district, and we will, when it does, and it does right now, we will actually fund positions or books, transportation, materials related to, you know, in this case, early college academy. So essentially, we raise the money, we provide it to, directly to vendors and or to district designated or for project expenses. All the money we provide are for programs that are led by the school district. We do not manage programs, we manage funds and keep them, steward them in alignment with what the grantor or the donor, what we agreed up on.
Any additional questions?
Yes, over the years, I've asked this question about the way the funds are allocated because I'm trying to understand when schools receive funds. I looked, tried to look it up to see how much various clubs received at the different schools or organizations that were set up in the school because in your literature, it said that it started with the principals and then your organization. You had an agreed up, an agreement upon how the money was to be spent and they were to report back to you, your organization?
So, let me, let me see if I can, so you're asking about these school funds or these donor designated funds.
Yes, because a lot of schools get more monies than the other schools over the years, and I've always been concerned that it seems as if some schools were getting very little.
That is one hundred percent, you know, true. Right now, for instance, you know, our largest, the largest amount of money by far across the district in terms of, you know, the activities and the, the monies available would be at Sumner because they have, they have a community arts group who's set up a community arts fund for them, and they have a massive alumni association that is just, you know, pays for scholarships and various other types of activities. So unfortunately, and unfortunately, the community, the donor who wants to give to a specific school, that's what they do because they want to encourage that school in their community or the school that they, that they graduated from, for instance. So even, for instance, the, Mr. Ferguson presented at the last meeting around the tech camp. That is a program that was set up at Clyde C Miller. We had a conversation, or he had a conversation with Ameren, again, we don't fundraise for individual schools. So he had a conversation, they provided a grant that was hosted by the foundation to pay for that. But we don't actually fundraise or play a role in, you know, say, you know, recruiting or deciding, you know, how many stakeholders or how many donors want to support various schools. But it is, Ms. Jones, it is a systemic or a system inequity.
Yeah, because I noticed, I went to many of, or most of the graduations, and the monies just didn't pan out. The poorer schools, like Feshan or Beaumont or something like that, they were not getting the kind of monies that are, not even Clyde C Miller, but a Metro or something like that, so. It's just real concerning, over the years, this has been a long time problem, and I really hope that this would change because I've been asking if it was possible that people can give directly to the school and just skip this other, the middle people because I just, I'm not seeing a turnaround quick enough for the other schools to get the monies that they need. A lot of our schools need equipment and various things, and, and it seems that your organization can determine, like you said, where those funds are gonna go. And I, it's just something that is not quite right about that, I know that there are tax loopholes and different things that you use, but a lot of our young people, and then you are focusing more on college, and college is important, that's important, but C T E right now is just as important because of the financial situation that many of our people, our young people graduating need help. And I would love to see a foundation geared toward helping those who really need the help right now.
Absolutely, we also just, by the way, do support internship programming at the district, and I was actually walking the union hall, the sheet metal workers' union hall last week with one of your staff members here to actually begin thinking about how do we make sure we're, you know, we, there's a real clear transition for, for kids who want to go directly into career. So you're absolutely right, we have to make sure kids have options that are going to be relevant for their interests and their needs. College is not for everybody, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't have the opportunity to, to have gainful employment and thriving wage.
I want to just answer some more of Board Member Jones's questions about people giving directly to the school, and I'm gonna defer to our C F O as it relates to why we strongly discourage.
Well, we strongly discourage it, direct, donors giving directly to the schools because how do we properly track and monitor and account for that? There could be areas where we are not getting those donations in time to, you know, record in our financial statements. And so it's more of a adherence to compliance, more of an internal control, because we are the financial district for the, for the district. So if the money is going directly to a school and we're not aware of it, how do we track that? We're relying on the school's internal controls and, not saying they're not good, but we need to be aware of where that money is going, how that money is being used. And keep in mind with donors, it, those are considered restricted funds, right? So they are donating money for a specific purpose, for a specific use, and how do we adhere and make sure that they are using that money in the correct way? So the reason why we don't encourage directly the funds going to the schools and coming through a central located department where we can track and monitor and record those properly, so it's a more of a strict, strict internal control reason.
I understand the strict internal control, but it was seen, I'm still wondering why, I, I have yet to see a real printout of just like a Feshan or Metro or whatever, a printout of what they receive, what the principal got, what kind of equipment from the foundation. I still don't see that as a board member, I don't see where, I mean, you, you say you have internal controls, but where's the proof? I, I don't see it as, as somebody who has to vote.
Absolutely, and the foundation is an independent nonprofit organization that we have no control over their financial records, how the money flows in and how the money flows out. That's why we, as a district, want to make sure that any money that's coming to our schools is coming through the district so we can properly account for it and track it and record it. So we have no control over the foundation and they're an independent entity. We are in control of managing the taxpayers' money that is given for our schools. That organization as a nonprofit has their own board, their own financial controls, and we can't direct how their money is being used.
I think the other thing is, there is, there is a possibility, and it is part of our reality, that one school could have ten people donating to that school where in that same space, another school could have just two donors donating to that school. Another school could have no one donating to that school. So you would see that one school has ten donors, and so that school may have had, and when I say ten donors, donated to the foundation for that particular school, saying that ten donors are going to donate to the S L P S Foundation, and that money is earmarked for a Feshan. Another two donors could say, we're gonna donate, and this money is earmarked to Metro. And what we want you all to spend that money on is X and Y. And then another school may not have a donor, so then you see ten thousand dollars going to one school, you may see twenty five hundred going to another school, and you may not see anything going to the school that did not have a, anyone saying that they're going to donate to that school. So that's where that variance comes in terms of how much a school could receive.
Right, I just, I had the concern that, what are we gonna do, because I really, when I look at their website, I can't tell.
Got it.
I can't tell who's getting the money, who's really not gonna get the money, and it's been going on a long time. And our schools have suffered.
I think I want to just maybe clarify that the foundation was born at a time about twenty seven, twenty eight years ago when there's a lot of turmoil in Saint Louis. You know, we had lots of superintendents flowing through, and there's just a lot of turmoil and a lot of trust, and, and the community wanted a way to, to stand by schools and invest in their local schools and invest in the district with a partner, an intermediary. And so that's why we exist as an independent organization. We by no means discourage anyone from giving directly to the district if that's what they want. I would let you know, though, we do keep levers of everything, so we have an outsourced accounting firm who does all our numbers and, and make sure the books are in order, and we do have a audit, an annual audit, from a different firm that does that.
But can the district look at that, can the board members look at that?
Those are publicly shared.
Items.
No, no, the audit, the audit statements in the nineties are publicly shared. The actual school ledgers and accounts, those are updated quarterly, and they are provided to the donors. And, yeah, and also to, for the use of, and, and also shared viewing with the, sort of the program manager. So in that case, it would have been Mr. Ferguson when we talked about the tech camp, so he would know what's in, what's in the account and what he can spend.
I'm asking because I'm just concerned, the board members need, if we're gonna be voting on these kind of things, I want to see, because the difference is like night and day.
I mean, the answer's been no for the last three years, right? Is the answer, I mean, that's ultimately the answer.
Yeah, I've wanted to know.
And I know, so basically, all the funds you get are already allocated. You don't have a general fund, so to speak, where you can disperse to other schools that might not have a person donating money to them, but, but you can still help.
So what we do, we, we fundraise for district wide sort of initiatives, and we pilot things at specific schools. And you'll notice that most of the schools where there are pilots, those are the schools that tend to be the schools that are not as supported by community dollars to a certain extent, so that's, you know, Feshan, Ashland, Yatman.
So you have a mechanism in place to be able to distribute funds.
That's right.
Do you have project or grant applications so that?
So we have to, when we write an application, we work with the district, the superintendent or their designee to actually agree upon a set of measures to meet, whether it's graduation rate, it could be college matriculation rate, it could be, I mean, it could be any of the metrics that are most important to district accreditation and or what, what her board has specified. I think the, so we, we write this grant with that in mind, and then if it gets funded, we receive those monies and we spend those monies in accordance with the grant, what, what we agreed we would do in the grant.
Because you are a, a private foundation and you're not associated, you support Saint Louis Public Schools, but you are not a part of Saint Louis Public Schools.
That is correct.
The information that we would have, that the board members have asked, access to would be those funds that were allocated to specific programs, not donor funds.
Oh.
Okay.
That's a, that's a non-issue, yeah, that's, yeah. We, we actually, and you'll see, it's written in the M O U, I mean, quarterly with, and, and share financial reporting on all those sort of programmatic expenses with the district, with levers, so that would, it's readily available to your, your staff and, and therefore to you, yes.
I, I have a question that therefore there, just a couple of questions. So in relation to fund allocation, I've talked to a number of the leadership folks at the Parent Action Council here in, for the district, and they've expressed repeatedly over the couple of months that I have been here difficulty accessing the funds that are allocated to them in relation to this, and that they've spoken to the foundation several times and don't really have any additional clarity on this, could you speak to that?
This would be my first time ever hearing of that. We actually cut checks. We actually cut checks weekly, and in cases of emergency, I have a card that I actually, people, you know, call us, and I have a card that can actually reimburse or take care of expenses if we need to be agile. I've never actually heard that before. If you want to share those names or any of those concerns, or I'm more than happy to hear that. But I'm sorry, I've just never heard that before.
Understood. Sorry to go back to funders, but I was able to access your list here and had a couple of questions about things related to that. It looks like from 20, let's see, 22, 23 to 23, 24, there was a significantly increased donation from the treasurer of the city of St. Louis. Could you speak a little bit to that?
Those funds were actually, those are provided, those are pass-through funds. They go directly to pay for district programming. And I think in that specific case, it may have been your learning or internship program.
So they're pass-through funds?
Yeah.
Can you, I understand the idea of a pass-through fund, but in this specific case, could you explain a little bit more?
Yeah, so.
It seems odd that it would be going through the treasurer's office, at least to me, but, yeah.
Yes, so that actually, it's happened, it happened actually in this past year too, where the state, incidentally, actually paid us money when it should have been going to the district. And so, you know, if we don't know, if we didn't write a grant for it, like, it's not ours. So that's when we follow up with your finance team and make sure it gets to the right person. So essentially, in that case, the government misdirected funds.
I see, so the donation here is actually just misdirected government funds? Is that the idea?
That's right, however, well, in that specific case, and I think what's important to note is that in terms of the timing when it was received, it had to be acknowledged in that way.
Sure, yeah. Interesting, okay, thank you. Two more questions on donors. It looks like the St. Louis Board of Education was a $50,000 donor in fiscal year 23, 24. I was not aware of that. Could you tell us more about what we donated to you all to donate back to us for?
I will, I need to take a look at that line item.
Sure.
I'm not sure, I don't have the annual report in front of me, but I'll.
I understand.
Yeah.
And then, just in relation to, and I worked in the nonprofit world for a long time, so I understand some of the thoughts around this. But anonymous donors are something that I imagine would concern this board, especially given some of the not-so-friendly outsiders to our district that sometimes want to influence things here, I'll just put it like that. And, you know, with Ms. Jones's concern about where money's coming from and where money's going to, I was wondering if that was something that you all would be willing to avoid in the future.
Anonymous gifts?
Yes.
That's not something we're prepared to do at this time.
Understood, thank you. And then I just had one final ques, this is just more of a comment, I guess. It sounds like you would have been under the impression that we might have gotten that programming, like detailed funding. It's not something that, at least, I think Ms. Jones has seen, it's not something that I have seen. So if that's something that could be, depending on how things go, improved in the future, I think that would be great. Because we're just not getting it. And I don't know, this independence thing is honestly a little confusing to me, considering the initiatives get code decided, it sounds like. But if we could get that information as the board, I think that would be great. So that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, thank you.
The next question, what are the foundation's financials and reporting?
Oh, so our financials, in terms of how we report, we, again, we do, we have an audit every year. We have never, we've only ever had a nice, clean audit. We have independent accounting firm come in just to make sure that we are observing all accounting rules. I know there's questions about levers, like the reason we have a third-party accountant, and the reason we have a third-party auditor is to make sure that all the internal controls are there to keep everyone's investments safe. The, in terms of the account information, we, it's not an issue for us. So we'll share that with the superintendent, and she will make sure, I'm sure, that you all get the information you're requesting.
Any additional questions for that one?
Yes, I do have one last question, and I wanted to ask why. I know that the foundation is stationed here in St. Louis Public Schools, and we pay you $40,000, not you personally, but the foundation, $40,000. And I was just trying to understand why.
Yeah, so, that's a great question. So the donor-designated accounts, the 140-plus, or donor-designated funds, the 140-plus, come into the district to the tune of anywhere between $3 and $4,000 a year, right? And we, the foundation, we manage all the customer service. We do the, we file the reimbursements, we cut the checks, we, like, we do all the financial reporting on all of it. Those accounts have only grown over the years. But it's to the tune of about, like, just north of $120,000. The $40,000 contribution is to help support that overhead cost. Those, the monies don't come out of the grants or program, they come out of our general operating. We don't, we don't mix that pot. So it's more of a contribution to the overhead for the accounting expenses and customer service.
Just a quick follow-up related to that. Where does that come out of the budget for the district?
Ms. Johnson?
It comes out of our general operating fund, and the specific, like, line item, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Historically, it's come out of the Advancement and Communications Department in the past, that's what I know.
That's helpful, yeah. I was wondering with the $50,000 Board of Education donation if that was coming out of our budget, which is something that has been an ongoing discussion here. So that's why I was, partially why I was asking.
The next question, what does the district own and what does the foundation own?
The district, I mean, our, as an independent foundation, we fundraise, we write, you know, through grant writing, through private solicitations, and we have our own priorities. Their reading pre-K8 literacy, their health and wellness, and their college and career access and readiness. All those three things the district does and is eligible for all those, like, there's just so much crossover. So we have priorities, we raise monies to support different causes. The district has programming. Basically, we fund that programming where there is alignment and in terms of the impact we're trying to make. And the district manages those programs. And at the end, we provide the donors a grant report.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, just a very, very quick follow-up. When you say the donors get followed up with that grant report, where the donors can, are we getting access to that grant report as well?
You're welcome to.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think we would love that, so, thank you.
The next question, how do our goals align?
So most recently, this, the district leadership adopted Portrait of a Graduate, which names a number of competencies. And again, if I'm referencing what the foundation, as an independent entity, cares about, whether you're talking about graduation rate, whether you're talking about reading proficiency or growth, whether you're talking about, you know, safety and health and wellness, you know, making sure that, you know, you have a student-to-therapist ratio that is actually appropriate for the need. Whether you're talking about having families, you know, supporting families with car payments, or, you know, maybe they just need to get through first month's rent so that their students can show up to school on time. You know, that's what we, the crossover is all there, and that's, that's sort of, I mean, why there's so much synergy.
Any other questions? And then the last question, I think you've answered that already. Why does the district pay the foundation $40,000 as part of the MOU?
Yes.
Any additional questions?
Just a quick follow-up, have we been paying that $40,000 without an MOU in place?
Yes.
Thank you.
But it's been board-approved. So last year, I don't know if you were there, there was a situation where Matt and Tony, they didn't pass the MOU, but they passed the measure to fund the actual fee.
President Cousins and Vice President Davis, yeah, thank you.
That's correct.
Are there any additional questions?
I just have a general question.
Yeah.
If a person wants to leave a legacy fund, I don't, you know, you don't have kids, no grandkids, no one, they have a million dollars that they just want to donate, become the legacy fund, do you do legacy funding also for scholarships? So it'd be determined that that would be for a specific scholarship for a specific school with criteria?
Do we do legacy funding also? Like, the foundation or?
For scholarships.
Yes, yes. And actually, recently, the last couple of years, we've had a number of donors pull out, pull their scholarships out of the district, you know, with various concerns. But knowing that there is a need for continuity, the foundation has actually expended out of our own restricted monies to fund those scholarships and keep them going until we could actually sit down with district leadership and figure out what we want to do with that.
Thank you.
I do have one last question.
Yeah.
Does the foundation actually help with charter schools as well?
No.
Thank you.
And so over the course of the year, you've seen how much support go to St. Louis Public Schools?
Could you restate that for me, Dr. Borishadi?
How much, sure, how much has St. Louis Public Schools received in just this one year?
Oh, well, in this past year, it was actually, like, this past school year. Or we are actually getting our audit ready for this upcoming. So in 2023, 24, it was 3.4 million, 3.49 million. And 2023, school year ending 2023, it was 2.6. And 2022 was 2.9, 2021 it was 3.5, so on. So it's usually in that 2.5 to, there, this past year, one of the audits will read about $5 million, so.
Thank you, additional question?
Just a brief follow-up to that. I just want to make sure I'm not off-base here, because of course, extra money to the district is always helpful. We're under no legal obligation to continue work with the SLPS Foundation. We could work with another nonprofit, we could have a different foundation, is that correct? Like, there's no, like, legal statute governing this relationship, correct?
There is no legal statute governing this.
Thank you.
My last question is in regards to political campaigns, can they donate to the foundation? And what would that mean?
We, so, we have had people who are no longer, basically, they may have, they're done running for their office or whatever. They might just give anything left in their campaign pot to the foundation.
I fall into that category.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't actively have any, any campaign money in our, in our account. It's actually something that we, that's a real fuzzy line that we would not cross just because it's, it gets sketchy with our 501(c)(3) status.
Okay. If there are no further questions, thank you, Mr. Douglas, and then we will move this to the consent agenda for August 12.
Thank you so much, and Mr. Conover, or anyone really, if there are more questions, or I'm 100% available to answer them at any time.
I hope that would be for anybody, so.
Well, yes, but I'm particularly presenting to you right now, so. Just tracking the speaker, I want to make that clear.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
You're moving it to the consent agenda without a board motion or vote in relation to this?
So I asked that it be moved.
You're making an ask for a motion to be made, okay.
Yeah, that was part of my original.
But we haven't made that motion, so that's what I'm just asking, okay, just making sure I understand, yeah.
We haven't made that motion, the president will call that in a minute, call it to the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Barisha Daye and the St. Louis Public Schools Foundation. In order to be able to move this to the, to our consent agenda for August, we need a motion on the floor.
Sorry, microphone issues. I'd like to make a motion to move the SLPS Foundation agenda item to the consent agenda for our August business meeting.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Sorry, there's definitely discussion. You gotta wait for us on that, okay. Just a couple of things. The first thing that I would mention here is, I think it may be apparent, clearly apparent to Mr. Douglas, that there are some questions around the foundation from a number of board members. So I was wondering if the motion maker would be open to an amendment to move this to an item for action, not a consent agenda item?
Yes, I am amendable.
Great. Well, I'll come back to that, but yeah, thank you. No, that's, I appreciate that, thank you. We'll have to make the amendment here in a second. But the second thing I would just, as a comment for all of us here at the board, conflicts of interest and apparent conflicts of interest are something I think we should always be very concerned about in relation to decisions like this that we have to make. Whether our campaigns have received donations from board members or whether, you know, partners are working very closely with the foundation or anything like that. It's something we frequently do with consent agenda items where we have familial connections or we have workplace connections. And that's something I would remind us to be mindful of here as well, thank you.
We need a motion to amend the original motion.
I'd like to amend my original motion that the MOU for the St. Louis Public Schools Foundation be moved to the consent agenda and moved to items for action for our August board meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
None for me, but thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for making that note.
Roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Just to be clear, this is on the amendment?
That's the motion on the floor, yes.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Morriston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins-Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So point of order, now we need to vote on the motion as amended?
A motion on the floor to be able to?
There's no motion needed, we just either discuss or have a second vote in relation to a roll call. So we've amended, Ms. Foster amended the original motion, we've approved that amendment, and now we have to vote on the motion as amended?
Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Morriston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins-Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 11-2, operations.
Thank you. Tonight's presentation is to build on the work that was started with the St. Louis Public Schools Board of Education 2021 Citywide Plan Resolution and the partnership that was commenced with the premier community engagement firm in May 2022, which led to the citywide blueprint that has several recommendations, more specifically, the school experience recommendation number three, which begins on page 19 and continues on page 20. It calls out the benefits of rightsizing the district and building school communities, and building community schools. Based on the 2025, 2026 approved budget, SLPS will be spending a minimum of $35 million from the fund balance. This does not include the This does not include the fact that the federal allocation for the Adult Education Learning Program has been withheld, meaning that SLPS will need to find an additional $799,400 to continue operating, or to continue supporting eight positions for the AEL program, which is an unplanned expense. Additionally, while 85% of the funds needed to repair damaged school buildings as a result of the tornado that hit St. Louis Public Schools, May 16, 2025, we will be reimbursed through FEMA and SEMA. SLPS will need to allocate the initial funds to pay for the repairs. Hopefully, the reimbursement will come within the '25-'26 school year. In speaking with KIPP leadership, it has also been shared that repairs will be needed for the new boiler at KIPP Mitchell location. Based on the cost during the '24-'25 school year, it was an unplanned expense that was greater than $500,000. We are also anticipating that our enrollment will be impacted by at least 2,000 students. Based on phone calls made to families, we know that 100 students have moved out of the city. Approximately 40 have enrolled in private schools and charter schools, and a few have explored the opportunity of virtual learning. When you think about the amount that SLPS will have to pay out in unplanned funds, here is what we know right now today. We've spent $96,000 for immediate debris cleanup. We've spent $1.2 million in immediate response for recovery to stabilize our school buildings. 200 point, I'm sorry, $23.5 million in insurance deductibles, and approximately $3.7 million in capital assets as it relates to the seven buildings that have been damaged from the storm, using our RCI estimates, as it relates to laptops and computers. We already know that we will have to spend $35 million anticipated from our fund balance for the FY '26 school year. This brings us to a grand total of $63,496,000. We know that with contingency being at 10%, that takes us to $69 million. FEMA will reimburse us to the tune of $21 million, which is 75%. SEMA will reimburse us to the tune of $2.8 million. Right now, there are still some unknowns, unknowns being salary and overtime, unknowns being the transportation for McKinney-Vento costs, and unknowns as it relates to our environmental costs. The good news is, on Saturday, July 19, 2025, the federal government shared that it will be releasing $1.3 billion in grant funding for the after-school and summer school programs, which was previously frozen. Of that amount, SLPS will be able to apply for $3.5 million to run our programs, which we also need to include our Saturday school, which has offered our high school students additional support needed to understand content being taught in the classroom and receive a passing grade, which is something that was started during the district-wide '23-'24 school year, ultimately increasing our graduation rates. In '22-'23, the district's graduation rate was 69.65, and then in '23-'24, the district graduation rate was 72.85, which is reflective of our students' dedication to learning and our teachers and administrators ensuring that our students have the support and resources that they need. However, we're still not certain about Title I, Title IIa. Last year, we received $347,000, which is for professional development. Title IIIa, which is for language, English proficiency, last year we received $275,000. Title IVa, for academic enrichment, last year we received $840,000, which is totally, which is an approximate amount of $1.5 million. Altogether, SLPS will be spending $70 million in unplanned expenses that will initially be supported by our fund balance. Corderan Clark attended the 12 community meetings, and one of the things that was loud and clear when it comes to reimagining St. Louis Public Schools is to maintain small class sizes. With that, Corderan Clark was asked to develop a plan based on having class sizes where it would reflect pre-K, K, pre-K through second grade having 17 students, third through fifth grade having 20 students, sixth through eighth grade having 23 students, ninth through 12th grade having 25 students, and getting to the utilization rate of 70% by the '26-'27 school year. When you think about getting to a balanced budget in '26-'27, it is important to note that if we continue to use our fund balance at this rate, it is quite possible that SLPS will get to the 3% fund balance requirement by DESI by the '20-'30 year. At this point, I would like to have Corderan Clark come to the podium to share.
Superintendent, can I ask a brief clarification question on what you just mentioned there?
Yes.
In relation to FEMA and SEMA, you said a couple of times that we will be reimbursed. Has that been confirmed, or is that just an expectation we have?
That's an expectation that we have.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Greg Goble. I'm the principal in charge of the St. Louis Office of Corderan Clark.
Can you turn on your mic, please? There you go.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Greg Goble. I'm the principal of the St. Louis Office of Corderan Clark. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight, and Steve and his team have been in the trenches looking at this information we're going to share with you for the last two years. So I'll keep my comments brief, and I have some very positive things to add later on in the show, so, Steve.
Thank you, Greg. President, Dr. Collins-Adams, Vice President Hubbard, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Borshad, thank you very much for having us here this evening and having an opportunity to present to you an update on our master planning process. Quickly, we have a brief agenda. We'll talk about schedule update. We'll also discuss the facility conditions assessment, demographic analysis. We'll have an update on the May 16 tornado data and how that affects student enrollment. And then we'll also talk about reimagining SLPS and next steps. So with that being said, the master planning process is quite complex. And as I've met with this board and this committee many times over the last several months, it is a step-by-step process. We have completed the data gathering, which is a data-intensive process. That is an analysis that includes facility conditions assessments, demographic analysis, capacity utilizations, educational adequacies. We also have a space needs analysis and space needs optimization scenarios, and we will be speaking about those more this evening. We have not yet gotten to recommendations. We have not yet finalized the master planning process. We will not be talking about recommendations tonight because we are not at that point. As the superintendent had mentioned earlier, we have had a series of community engagement meetings. These have been wonderful opportunities to visit with the community. We had six meetings during Phase 1 where we discussed about, we talked about data and reporting of that data. We had a wonderful set of sessions for Phase 2, six more meetings, we were met with the community, and we talked about the things that were important to them. Specifically, as Dr. Borshad had mentioned, limited class sizes. That was one of the things that we heard loud and clear. So as we get into the facility condition assessment data, a couple of key terms, I'd like to just kind of refresh everyone's memory. Specifically, reserve items. Reserve items is something that we're going to talk about quite a bit because those are the costs of items that the district will be on the hook for in terms of assets, roofs, windows, doors, mechanical systems, who have reached their expected age. If a roof is, has a 25-year lifespan, and the roof has been on your building for 20 years, that roof needs to be replaced. That is an item that would be carried forward as part of a reserve cost. We also talk about something called current replacement value, or CRV. That is the cost of a replacement building. That is not the cost of a replacement school. I want to make that distinction because as part of a facility conditioned assessment, that CRV value is very important. That helps us get to other variables. However, it's important to note that the replacement value is the total square footage of a facility. If a building is 100,000 square feet, and the building is 100 years old, and the building is serving 500 students, a brand-new school would employ current methodologies. It would incorporate new learning environments, large gymnasiums, technologies, and things of that nature. That would be the cost of a brand-new school and the brand-new programming associated with that school. For the purposes of this study, a current replacement value is a square footage cost for the existing buildings in place. And that's also part of the facility conditioned index. This is a percentage score, which we'll talk about quite a bit. It is a value, it goes between 0 and 100%. If you can imagine, low scores are basically lower values, a lower, a lower current need relative to the replacement value. Higher numbers, or numbers in the red, are bad. Those are more expensive numbers. If you can imagine a used car, when you drive that car off the lot, you don't have to do anything except for change the tires and the oil periodically. Those are manageable costs. As that car gets to the 10- and 15-year lifespan, you're looking at engines and transmissions, and those costs become more substantial. Our target is to keep that number under 30%. That's the industry standard. That's the number by which we start looking significantly at critical thoughts needing to be put into whether or not to continue to invest in those specific infrastructures. So as part of the facility condition assessment, the first thing we did about a year ago was we went through and evaluated all the facilities. We had more than 30 assessors, which include architects, engineers, and planners. We surveyed all of the district's buildings. We looked through gathering data and captured more than 10,600 individual data points through our mobile collection devices and our technologies. As part of that process, we identified a number of critical items that would be evaluated. Just briefly, if you see the top two lines on that graphic, these are the number of, the number of items that we identified that were immediate needs in terms of 0 to 9 years or 10 to 19 years. Those are, that's called the reserve term, or 20 years, which is what our facility condition assessment was geared toward. So if you can imagine, each one of those individual line items are things that will need to be replaced and/or repaired within that 20-year term. We also want to make sure that we identify 68 school buildings, 79, I'm sorry, 68 schools, 79 buildings, 10,600-plus observations, and a total assessed square footage, 6.542 million square feet. It was quite an effort. So what we see here is something called our system expenditure forecast. If you can imagine, the average age of an SLPS school is more than 79 years old. What we've done as part of this process is we've identified each of the costs for each of the schools for each of the things we've identified. It's broken up by system. We look at structure, facade, roofing, interiors, and so on. We look at immediate needs, which are things that are costs that the district will be responsible for, for the ongoing repair and maintenance of those facilities. That number right now is at $42 million, and I would point out that the information that you see is part of a living, breathing document. When I spoke with you some months ago, these numbers were a little bit different. Since the tornado of May 16, we've gone through and updated this database, and that $42 million number does reflect some of those costs. We also look at it in the short, the near, the midterm, and the long term. If you summarize all of those costs cumulatively across the bottom of the page, the total reserve costs with 7% year-over-year inflation adjustments, that value is $1.843 billion. That's the cost of maintaining 68 schools. So as part of this process, we've also gone through and identified something called our facility condition assessment dashboards. We completed these for each of the 68 schools. What you see here is Hamilton Elementary. What we've identified at the top is building summary information, which identifies grade level, school type, building size in terms of square footage. We also look at enrollment data, original build dates, and acreage for the sites. We also look at critical maintenance. These are items that were identified as part of the facility conditioned assessment. We see here at Hamilton, we've identified facade and flooring as items that require critical maintenance. We also look at the very bottom where it says prop S work. Throughout the course of the prop S projects, many improvements have been made to a number of buildings throughout the district. This dashboard is an effort to recognize and identify what some of those projects are for each of these individual buildings. And as you see here for Hamilton, improvements have been made in signage, exterior doors, roofing, paint, benches, and tuck pointing. We also look at something called capacity and utilization, and we'll talk quite a bit about that later. 243, that is the enrollment that was provided by the district, the building capacity of 453. I think it's important to note that building capacity is a number. What we're looking at in terms of capacity are the number of students that can be in a specific building. Oftentimes, when we look at a building capacity, we count 20 rooms. Those rooms might be 650, 750, 800 square feet, and we assign a per square footage per student for each of those spaces. However, every school and every program is unique. Some buildings might take a specific room and have a special program. They might have an area for a community to come in and for students to pick up clothing. They might have special programs. It might be used as a teacher area. Quite frankly, sometimes they use them for storage. So although that value has a capacity of 453, it's important that every single school looks at it a little bit differently. When we identify building capacity, we look at the total number of rooms, not respective to the actual programs that might be contained. And as part of that capacity, we also look at something called utilization. And that is a function of the student enrollment divided by the overall building capacity, and that gets us at 53.6%. On the right-hand side of the page, we look at something called the Facility Condition Index Score, or FCI score. We look at these little dashboards. We look at those for year 2024, and we take that all the way through year 2044. Every year, we've identified expenditures for reserve costs for repairs to those specific buildings. And each year, we also have a commensurate dashboard score. Again, our target number is to keep those under 30. That's where buildings tend to get older and have significant repairs. As you see with Hamilton, that number is relatively modest until we get to year 2034. So as we get to that 10-year mark, the reserve costs on that building are now at $8.9 million. And as you get to year 2044, those, FCI score is at 45, which is significantly higher than 30, with a reserve cost of $15.9 million. Also, on each of these dashboards, we've included current replacement values, which, as I discussed earlier, is just a square footage replacement. In this particular case, it's 65,110 square feet, based upon an industry standard square footage valuation. We've identified these with Peabody Elementary, Shenandoah Elementary, just for reference. Now briefly, we'll talk a little bit about demographics. There's a couple of key terms I'd like to share with you, first of being is overall enrollments. The data that we use is based upon Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That information was for school year '24-'25. We also are looking at specific St. Louis Public School location data. And that is data that was provided to us as part of where students are located. This is anonymized. We do not have any student-specific information. This is so that we know where individuals and students are for the purposes of tracking them and demographics. We also talk about capacity. We have, our initial analysis was based upon the enrollments, which were provided by St. Louis Public Schools. They had commissioned a demographic analysis in 2011 through a company called MGT. That's how we get some of our initial data. As Dr. Borshad had mentioned, as part of our community listening sessions, there was a desire for reduced class sizes, so we were asked to come back and do a secondary student capacity study. And as was indicated, we're looking at grades PK through 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9 through 12 with the relevant student square footages for each of those. As we look forward to the demographic data, we look first at the city of St. Louis. The city of St. Louis most recently had a overall student count of 286,578 persons. Our forecast model, and as that, the city of St. Louis demographic has been trending downward for a number of years, we forecast that over the next 10 years that that will continue to decline at approximately 7% with an estimated loss of almost 21,000 residents. So as you can see, the loss of overall population within the city of St. Louis is significant. Fewer people within the city of St. Louis will result in fewer students as part of St. Louis Public Schools. As we move forward to some specific St. Louis Public School demographic data, what we see here is a quick bar chart. What we're looking at is the three zones of the district. We've got north, central, and south. What we're looking for is the red solid bar is basically the total number of students. And what you see as the, kind of the pochade bar above it, is the actual total capacity. So you see in the north zone, we have a capacity of more, almost 10,000 students, but we actually have an enrollment of only about 4,000. That gives us a utilization of 40.8%. We have similar values for the central and the south zone. As we look at the total district capacity, again, part of that 2011- As we look at the total district capacity, again, part of that two thousand eleven study, we come up with thirty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-nine students. Total district enrollment at the beginning of the school year was eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-two, which gives us a total district-wide utilization of fifty-two point four percent. That's one out of every two chairs in the classrooms are empty. As we move forward, we look at some specific demographic dashboards. Again, here, we're looking at Hamilton Elementary School. What you see first is a school proximity map that gives us an idea of where we are within the city, and also, we're identifying basically the walking zone. This is a one-half mile radius. We're also looking at attendance map. It's a little small on your screen, but if you see is the attendance zone for the school, what we've been able to do is to geocode each of those students as they attend that school. So you can see literally a red dot for every student that is attending Hamilton. On the right-hand side, we have an enrollment chart, which basically tracks year-over-year grade level by grade level, and we're tracking the number of students. On the lower left-hand side, we see school information, everything from commute time, walkability, transit score information, and basic student-teacher ratios. We've also included feeder patterns and basic academic performance. As we look at our next enrollment dashboard, we have a larger version of our student attendance map, but again, you can see the overall attendance zone, and you can see the dots representing those students attending Hamilton. We have specific information on student race and ethnicity. We also look at English language learner, student enrollments, and transient student enrollment information. We also include median age for both men and women. All this information was captured through publicly available community, American community survey data, which is updated on a five-year basis. We also have children and households, and this is a little bit of a confusing diagram, but if you look at the bottom, you look at the total households. Total households are one thousand and twelve. Of those, forty percent of those households contain children. We also break that down by ownership and by rentals. So we have, if you look at the ownership, we've got about a hundred and fifty-two owners have children, approximately two hundred and fifty-three renters with children, with a total of about four hundred and five over that, that number. It's important to notice, we look at the bottom as the household data, we're also able to capture median incomes, we're able to look at poverty information, vehicular ownership, but also equally important, the number of students which were attending St. Louis Public Schools. We know how many students, based upon the demographic data, how many households have school-aged children, and we know how many students within that geographic boundary are attending these schools. In this particular case, only twenty-five percent of those students were attending Hamilton. It's an important figure as we start to look toward planning. And we include similar information for Peabody, Shenandoah, and others. So as you jump forward, we're going to look at some specific information as it relates to the tornado on May sixteenth. Oops, there we are. So what you're looking at here is a, it's kind of a colorful map. Everything in red illustrates the significant wind events of that tornado. The wind speeds, it's important to note that we're up to a hundred and fifty-two miles an hour. They caused significant damage and destruction throughout many of the areas of North City. What you see on the, the areas, I'm titled one through twelve, those are the twelve schools that were immediately impacted by the tornado. Many of those schools have since opened. Some of them have not. They've got more, more damage that needs to be repaired. As part of this, we've identified enrollment, capacity, utilization, FCI scores, reserve costs through the year twenty forty-four, replacement costs, and estimated tornado damage. Those are all included as part of this. We've also included, for clarity, the red line from the lower left to the top right indicates the path of the tornado, and all of the individual pinpoints are specific areas where building damage was identified, again, through publicly available National Weather Service-type data. It's a fascinating diagram to look at the power of the tornado and as it has affected many of these North City schools. As part of this demographic study, we looked at several different items. Basically, there were three items in total that we were asked to review. One is identifying the number of students whose schools were damaged, the number of students were impacted because their homes were damaged, but we also look at the likelihood of how many students will be leaving the district in the short term, and how many are likely to return over the medium and long term. This is important for planning purposes as we move forward. So as part of this risk factor, we developed a series of matrices and, and logic. The first item is, was the student's home damaged? Was the student's school damaged? Was there significant damage to their home, and was there significant damage to their schools? As you see, as we kind of filter through this matrix, there can be a low likelihood to leave the district, a medium, and a high likelihood. These low, medium, and high are all metrics that we had used in terms of calculating overall As we look forward to the school damage estimate, I mentioned earlier that there were twelve schools that were affected, eight elementary, three middle, and three high school. Most of the heavy damage include over at Hashland, Hamilton, Hickey, Washington, Montessori, Yatman, Soldan, and Summer. This next diagram, very similar to the first one, but this is looking at actual impact areas. What we're looking at here in red is the path of the tornado. The area in blue, most proximate tornado paths, is an area of, it's basically a geographic buffer. It's a very conservative estimate. It's low, which would include fewer overall students. The area to the blue, the light, the lighter blue, just immediately beyond that, is a higher area. What we're looking at is a higher number of students, again, a conservative estimate, that would be impacted by the events of the tornado. Again, we're looking at a low and a high area as part of our evaluation. What you see next is a, is a diagram indicating the total number of students that were enrolled, that were impacted by the storm. So we're looking at the twelve schools, and as you can see in this diagram, we see a, a decline in overall student enrollment in blue, in the solid blue. And as you get to the dash line, those were our immediate projections. We also looked at home damage estimates. Again, we're looking at high and low estimates. It's important to note, in this particular case, we're looking at about a thousand feet of distance between the path of the tornado, which helps us to identify the number of students in total. What we're looking at here is approximately one thousand students identified between the low area of impact and the high area of impact. And finally, we look at this diagram, which is a little bit more detailed, because it identifies the low areas, the high areas, but we've also overlaid the number of students. So what you see in red and yellow and green is the density of students that were immediately impacted as part of that damage as well. It's interesting that tornadoes and natural disasters are not new, and as demographers and as planners, we've seen these over a period of time. So we all remember in August of two thousand and five Hurricane Katrina hit. I'm not suggesting that this tornado was of the same magnitude, however, the logic still is sound. The Louisiana schools had sixty-five thousand six hundred and ten students back in oh-five. Immediately after Hurricane Katrina, that enrollment dropped to twenty-four thousand. It's important to note that over the next seven or eight years, that enrollment increased, but it never got back to pre, pre-Katrina levels. So these are some of the lessons that we learned and some of the methodologies as we start to identify what we can anticipate with St. Louis Public Schools. What we look at here are the total number of students affected. If you look on the top right-hand side, we look at a low estimate of approximately one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine, and a high estimate of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-two students. These are the students that were impacted by the tornado. We've also had a breakdown by individual schools. We look at their school enrollment, and then in the low area of estimates and the high area of estimates. It's important to note, as we look at the district, the student demographics and the impact of the tornado are not limited just to those twelve schools. Those families and those students sometimes don't attend schools that might be their neighborhoods. They might be part of a magnet program. They might be transported. They might have family. What we've identified is we've tried to take our existing demographic data as part of our initial analysis and extrapolate that throughout the district. So what you see here is a listing of many of the buildings throughout the district, in addition to the original twelve, that would also be impacted by this. We've also included low, high, and then deltas between the two for each of those buildings that we believe will be impacted by this tornado. So as we start to look at all this information, we start to come up with some quantifiable results. If you look at the diagram on the lower right-hand side, if we look at the high area of impact with the high area of migration, and we factor into that the forecast enrollment for school year twenty-five, twenty-six, which starts at fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety students, we're looking at basically a loss of two thousand students. So two thousand fewer students attending SLPS next year as opposed to this year, and that's in combination with the anticipated decline, which we've seen as part of our demographics as well. So again, that two thousand student count is a significant number. So now we talk a little bit about reimagining St. Louis Public Schools. So what you see here is a diagram of many local school districts proximate to St. Louis Public Schools. So in yellow, you see our St. Louis Public Schools. We've got sixty-eight schools with an enrollment, again, for this school year of eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-two, has an average, two hundred and sixty-six. What we wanted to do is to look at many of our neighborhood school districts and see what their similar numbers might look like. As we look at Hazelwood, which is immediately north, thirty-one schools, sixteen thousand three hundred and sixteen students, an average school attendance of five hundred and twenty-six, significantly different than St. Louis Public Schools at two sixty-six. If we look at Ritner, if we look at Webster Groves, Ferguson Flores, and Riverview Gardens, we start to see that similar pattern. If we averaged all of those school districts that identified above, you know, those average attendance at each school is approximately four hundred and forty-three. Again, St. Louis Public Schools averages about two hundred and sixty-six. So clearly, there's a disparity between the number of schools and the number of students relative to many of our neighbors. So as part of our exercise, we did a scenario planning exercise. What we looked at is a series of baseline data. This is a data-driven analysis. These are not recommendations. This is a summary of evaluation criteria based on a number of factors. We looked first at utilization. We looked at those schools that have utilization of less than fifty percent, which is a function of the overall building capacity and student enrollment. Lower utilization, lower student enrollment. We also look at Facility Condition Index, FCI scores, of greater than thirty. Again, greater than thirty, higher costs, higher replacements. We also identified a series of data points on the left-hand side. We looked at the total number of schools, student enrollments, utilization. Our first utilization was based upon the study that was prepared by the district in two thousand and eleven, and as part of that, we also looked at building capacities and utilizations. And again, as a result of the community engagement meetings that we had discussed early on, those phase-two meetings made it clear that we want to right-size and provide appropriately-sized classrooms. So just as a recap, we looked at PK through two at seventeen students per classroom, grades three through five at twenty students, grades six through eight at twenty-three, grades nine through twelve at twenty-five. Those were the utilization targets that we looked at moving forward, and we also updated our building capacities. We also looked at our Facility Condition Index scores. Again, the value of our replacement cost over repair costs, the higher the score, the more costly those buildings are to maintain. We looked at reserve costs, which is the value of the building systems that have outlived their industry-accepted useful life. Again, that was all built upon our existing Facility Condition Assessment and the reserve cost savings. These are the savings by not having to spend on building systems that have outlived their lifespan. The first with the column we'll look at is the school year twenty-four and twenty-five. That's our baseline. That captured all of the information as part of this calendar year. Then we look at school year twenty-five, twenty-six. What we've done is we projected data for the fall, including further declining enrollment in addition to that of the tornado that I just described earlier, and we've also included updated repair and maintenance costs from the damaged buildings as part of that tornado. If we jump to the last column, we look at school year thirty, thirty-one. That was our target. Our objectives were identifying an average targeted utilization of between seventy, seventy-five percent. We are looking at lowering our Facility Condition Index Score, again, reducing overall operations and maintenance costs, and providing a number of schools to support those recommended classroom sizes. To achieve these objectives, the St. Louis Public Schools requires only thirty-one facilities. That's a surplus of thirty-seven buildings. Again, this is what the data should suggest. It's important to note, as we look at the reserve cost savings, at the very, very bottom, that twelve million six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar number, that's lower than in previous years. This is a function of the Facility Condition Assessment and the year-over-year costs. I talked earlier about the, the roofing example, and in this particular case, some of those costs don't come due until after school year thirty, thirty-one. What we then did was we recalculated from school years twenty-six, twenty-seven through years twenty-nine and thirty, and we recalculated our enrollment, our utilization, our Facility Condition Assessment, and our reserve costs. It's important to note that this, this exercise only extends through school year twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-one. The demographics suggest that enrollment will continue to decline beyond those dates. One value I would point out is that there is a total value of the savings of looking at only those occupied schools. Again, we're looking at the value of the schools that are in service and those that would be not required to meet the educational and occupancy requirements. That total reserve cost is in the excess of a hundred and eighty-two million dollars. Those are dollars that the district can allocate toward buildings and teachers and students, and supporting the academic achievement of all of our young scholars within the city of St. Louis. We've also gone down, breakthrough, broken out that information as part of the elementaries, middle schools, and high schools. We've also done some statistical analysis, and we've looked at a variety of data sources. Basically, we're looking at modeling the city of St. Louis. And it's important, because this is valuable information as we start to identify our communities. As we start to look at these in a more detail, we've identified existing buildings, vacant parcels. This information comes in large part from St. Louis Land Development Corporation and Land Utilization Agency. We can identify those available properties, opportunity zones, neighborhood revitalization areas, community improvement zones, historic neighborhoods, and those areas that have real estate tax abatement properties. All of this information is really critical as we start to look at our communities and our schools and understanding what the future of St. Louis might look like. With that, I'll pass it over to Greg.
I think one of the challenges here is that when you understand that there is a surplus of schools, there's an opportunity cost that goes along with maintaining those schools. And that means you don't have the money, you're just putting into, stopping them from falling into the ground. So what I want to talk about is the more optimistic part of this conversation, because when you reserve that money, you have money to reinvest. And there's always a, a difficulty that a lot of people have when they have a school that's a hundred years old or so that hasn't been maintained as well as it probably should have been, to not be able to understand what can happen once the money is there to support it. So I'm going to show you this example that we, as a firm, constructed a little more than ten years ago now. It was the East St. Louis High School. We worked for the district over there for a number of years, and we're quite proud of the work we did. The image that you see is one of the images from inside, but I'm going to take you through the process, because I think what we want to get out to the public is that there's a measure of optimism that's in play here, because the money you save from dealing with the surplus schools allows us to do things that people won't expect. So the school that you see there, the original high school, was about seventy years old when we were, when we encountered it as a thing, and a lot of the deferred maintenance had not been accomplished, and it was just, there were a lot of problems with the building. You can see the, the before picture there. There were window air conditioners that were often falling out of the windows. The windows had failed. The whole school was in some version of that state of repair. And when we got done, and by the way, the school never closed, we kept it open the whole time we were working on it. That's what it looked like when we finished from the outside. And to this day, it's one of the things I'm more proud of that we've done, because the school looks like something that was higher ed. We invested a lot of energy. That was a courtyard space there that you could see just how poorly the building had been maintained. We actually infilled the courtyard in order to create new library spaces, and so all of these are sort of before and immediate afters, and, and this is the same sort of thing that we can do with your surplus schools in a whole lot of different ways. So in some cases, you may need a new school, and, and we've talked, for example, about the fact And we've talked, for example, about the fact that the north end was hit pretty hard by the tornado. Well, it seems to me, and to us in the conversation we've had, that perhaps building a new school on the north side of town is appropriate to offset the loss they've had. So this isn't just a subtraction process, this is a process of addition. You identify the surpluses, you account for them in terms of, in some cases, we've created things like we have in other offices within the corporation have done, we've taken old schools and made them housing, for example, or senior centers, or they can be repurposed for a whole lot of different reasons and ways. So again, this isn't one of subtraction consistently, it's addition in creative ways, and we can bring that to the table. I think this is a big deal, and this message has not gotten out because the money that you save, and remember, Steve's number was one point eight five billion dollars that you're going to spend over that twenty-year period. That money can be better repurposed for the things we're talking about. So at the end of the day, the children of the city of St. Louis will realize the value of the hard choices that you have to make now. I think that's a positive thing.
So quickly in summary, demographic study. City of St. Louis population will decline over seven percent over the next ten years. The St. Louis Public School student enrollment will continue to decline as well. Our facility conditions assessment identified our buildings are more than seventy-nine years old. Our average building utilization right now is at fifty-two percent. And our reserve cost totals, as Greg had mentioned, one point eight four billion dollars. Our data-driven analysis, as we look at identifying facilities to meet the needs of our students based upon what we heard as part of our community engagement and sizing our classrooms appropriately. We looked at a couple of targets. We're looking at those utilizations. We're targeting schools that were less than fifty percent. We were targeting those facility conditions assessments, again, that were greater than thirty, identifying a total surplus of thirty-seven schools. The potential reserve cost savings through year twenty-thirty, thirty-one is the amount of a hundred and eighty-two million dollars, a significant total for the school district.
You might speak briefly to the notion that when you don't adequately staff schools because the enrollment figures are down, that the students that are going to the schools don't get all the resources they deserve. Want to talk to that a little?
This is an opportunity to identify opportunities for our students and our young scholars and our facilities to focus those areas, focus those resources on those schools that are most in need so that we can provide the best possible resources for our students each and every single day, provide them every opportunity for everything that they can possibly imagine. Really, as part of the portraits of a scholar, as been described by the superintendent over and over again, this is really that opportunity to reimagine that and really funnel those valuable resources toward those individual scholars.
If the school doesn't have the staff they need...
I'll need you to speak into the mic.
A smaller school that doesn't have the full staff that it needs doesn't sometimes have a music department or an art department or any of those things. So what happens is, just by luck of the draw, the child that's going to that school that doesn't have those, doesn't get those things. When you consolidate and drive the enrollment figures up, the building gets adequately staffed at that point, and now every student in every school has the resources they need to learn consistently across the district, and they're not singled out to be isolated from some of that.
Thank you.
The floor is open to questions.
Yeah. The Cardigan Clark reports and dashboards are key data. It's very, very important that they be accurate. And then, once they're accurate, it's very important that they be as widely shared as possible. So I just wanted to address some issues I noticed with some of the numbers. Going back to slide seven, I think the CRV, the current replacement value, should be in the denominator of the FCI calculation. So it's reversed on slide seven. And then, the May twenty-twenty-five version of the facility condition assessment dashboard that was released, the facility condition index numbers for Academy of Entrepreneurship Studies in Adams Elementary were wrong. Those just happened to be the first two alphabetically in the report, so they jumped right out at me.
Mr. Marsden, sorry to interrupt. What slide are you looking at for that?
For the May twenty-twenty-five report. It's online on SLPS at a very long URL.
I'm just trying to follow you.
Difficult to find.
No, you're all good. I'm just trying to follow you. Thank you. I appreciate the questions.
Let's see. And so on this deck that we have today, yesterday it was page forty-three, but it's been updated to be page forty now. It was page forty-three to forty-six until, I think, today now is page forty to forty-three. But on yesterday, the thirty-seventh, the summary slide that showed thirty-seven surplus schools, thirty-seven was the number, and that was broken down into twenty-five elementary, twenty-seven, twenty-seven elementary schools and five middle schools, and then there were zero high schools noted. But Square made a call to the bullpen last night, I know, and they sent in the reliever, and they got the five added to the high school one. But I'm just making the point that it's really important to get these numbers right. And again, once they are correct, I would like to see the facility condition assessment dashboard and the enrollment dashboard and the demographic dashboard for all schools shared in a prominent place on slps.org. Like, this slideshow has, you know, a few samples of, like, maybe three schools, I think, for each one. But I think we all would like to have the full deck. Sorry, I've got, Superintendent Morrisade is supplying me with lodgings because my throat's been an issue today. So I guess just the last thing. I think that those are, well, two more things. So those are sort of some of the just basic math things that I noticed that make me then question the accuracy of other numbers. But on page, again, the number's changed now, but the elementary school analysis for the surplus schools shows five thousand two hundred and seven elementary school students leaving the district in twenty-twenty-six, which is a fifty-three percent drop in one year. And I guess I was wondering if that is what your projections are showing and kind of what the capture rate you're basing that on is. And then, last comment from me is, you already said that page forty is not a, which shows the, it's the table that shows the surplus schools, that it's not a recommendation. And I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on this, that it's not a recommendation, it's a scenario. And that scenario is based on, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is essentially counting schools as surplus if their utilization is currently less than fifty percent and if their facility condition index score is higher than thirty percent. And just when you do that, you end up with thirty-seven schools. Is that right?
Yes. First of all, lots of questions. Thank you very, very much. Yes, we did provide a draft report, so we did make some corrections to that. Thank you for pointing that out. When it comes to the enrollment data, we've actually gone through and calculated enrollments for every school throughout the district, so we have all of that student enrollment information. We did it once a couple of months ago. We did it again as part of the tornado evaluation. That will be done a third time after the September enrollment information is made public. So once the district reports that information, we'll come back and revisit those numbers yet again. But I'm with you, we want to make sure these numbers are absolutely as accurate as possible. And your comment also about making sure that all of these dashboards are publicly available. Yes, we can certainly do that. We've got dashboards done for all sixty-eight facilities at this point. I believe the, I believe the facility condition assessment dashboards have made public. Once we have additional information and we start to finalize the demographics, we can certainly make those available to the district as well.
Sorry, one more addendum, which is, and I'm not going to go into the weeds on this, but it's possible I'm misreading the chart, but the children and household chart mixes integers and percentages on the same axis. And when I do the calculations, the total percentages are not coming out to what I expect. And I could go into that more, but it's hard to do without looking at a spreadsheet.
Excellent point, and actually, we've gone round and round about this. It's, it is a little confusing to look at, but basically, the total households, and I'm just pulled up Hamilton for reference. If we look at the total households of one thousand and twelve, we look at forty percent of those have school-aged children. If we look at those who own, that's fifteen percent, and those that rent is twenty-five percent. Those percentages total the forty percent. We can certainly make that more clear and provide some specific information as part of our finalized dashboards, just to make that more clear. It's the denominator, which is the value that we're trying to track. It's not proportional, if that helps.
I mean, even just on adding the numbers, let me go to that Hamilton one here real quick.
I think it's nineteen, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay.
Keep in mind, the numbers of owners and the numbers of renters are not necessarily the percentages of the households with children. We're actually looking at two distinct variables there. I think that's where the confusion lies.
So for Hamilton, we've got, I'm not even going to look at the percentages, but just looking at adding the integers, three hundred and forty-three plus six hundred and sixty-eight is not a thousand and twelve, it's a thousand and eleven. It's just one number off, but still.
Oh, that's a rounding error, but thank you for your point.
I think in the narrative, the comparison to a storm that occurred twenty years ago in Louisiana, and although you did clarify that it was really no comparison, it was all, it's listed in the report, and it's the perception, it is a comparison when you were right. It was, there is no comparison to what happened in Louisiana, where multiple areas across the city of New Orleans, Jefferson Parish, St. Bernard Parish, St. Tammany were flooded, algiers. And although many students didn't come back, there were, there were reasons why, and houses were, entire neighborhoods were permanently destroyed. If you go there now, many of those neighborhoods have been rebuilt, and things have changed in the city radically from what it was immediately after the storm, as we watched it grow. I say "we" because I'm from there. I also have another board member that has an association with her family there. So that narrative, if there were comparisons to other things, it should be something more similar to what we're experiencing with only a portion of our city that was affected by the tornado and how we could impact that, how we could improve that with working with other individuals, city leaders, and all to be able to rebuild our neighborhoods, redevelop, and create an atmosphere that would be conducive to building schools. So if, and I realize this is just a report, a report has to be the beginning step and you had actually been brought on previously. I mean, you, the Cardigan Clark report is not new to us. This is an update from what you have presented to us previously and is online for us. I appreciate the effort that you put into it, but it really is only just for benefit of the people that are watching this, only just a report. It's, we're not making decisions on this. This may have indicated a long-term plan, but that long-term plan also brings us into a fiscal year that's six years away from here. And we need to be able to do things methodically with a lot of community input. And consider not just the data, but the emotional impact that it has on everyone while we're doing this. So that's my piece on this. Thank you. Additional comments, Ms. Jones?
Yes. I have to say, your report was pretty depressing because that means a lot of people would lose their jobs, they would lose their homes because of this. And I hope all the data that you have collected and that the city, the district has paid for will encourage the city of St. Louis to do their job. It's time to hold people feet to the fire because there's no reason why those millions of dollars that the city of St. Louis received on the backs of black and brown and poor working-class people would not be spent on housing. There is no decent, affordable housing in this city, and it was by intent. I remember saying it, I've been here nineteen years. Nineteen forty-seven, there was a document called Team Four that was put together to deny North St. Louis resources. And here you are today. The city, I'm sorry, is troublesome to me because I look at the city schools, and I, as soon as a school were closed, I watched, it seems as if there was some type of professional gang that would come in and demolish the school from inside out. I remember when Dunbar got attacked last year, they came in and ripped all the plumbing out. And it's amazing that they never got arrested, no one ever found out who did it. They do these things on purpose and destroy the city schools, and then they sit in the neighborhood, bring the neighborhood down. And then here people come, just like in my neighborhood in Wanda Park. All the speculators, they come and they want to buy your property up cheap. All the people who have been in the tornadoes, they want to buy your land up cheap, and there you have nowhere to go. So there are thousands of families that are displaced. I remember when I was a lead inspector, and I would go into people's homes, and you'd have three or four bunk beds in a basement. You would have people living in an attic where asbestos was. You would have people in a two-bedroom house. And the city of St. Louis was well aware of that. So there's no reason why people, when you get ready to vote, look at the people you're voting for. Me and anyone else. Make sure these people are really legit people, and they're going to do what you asked them to do because there's no reason why those millions of dollars is not going toward building new and affordable housing. And yes, we can, you're talking about closing schools, it's a very emotional subject for me because when schools were closed last year, or not yet last year, but three or four years ago, we still were not able to do anything to replace those buildings for our students. And our students deserve the very best. We have so many raggedy schools, and that's because of the city of St. Louis. Well, stop playing like we're not living in a catastrophe here. Our students are out here doing everything because they're upset, their families have nowhere to go, people are living, the weather's changing, we have thousands of homeless people. Stop playing. This report is dangerous. It's dangerous. Whenever they come to the black and brown neighborhoods, it takes forever to get something done. When you go out in the county somewhere, they're done next week. But somewhere like where I live at, or where Grand is, where it takes forever to get done. Let's not let them do this anymore. Ask for that money. This is, we have no excuses anymore. I'm tired of seeing all the people who are doped out, strung out because they have nowhere to go. I see them walking like zombies late at night, two or three in the morning, because they're homeless. They have nowhere to go, and there are no businesses. So let's put all people accountable for what they have done to this city. So this report here, you nailed it, you got everything right. But I don't believe that we won't be able to overcome this. We're worried about making this city attractive to people to come downtown. I don't care anything about people wanting to come downtown. All I care about is our neighborhoods first. Take care of home first, and then we'll take care of everybody else. You want to come visit, that's well and good. But all the people who vote, pay taxes and everything, we need to take care of them first. With the tax abatements and incentives and that kind of thing, how would you have the Millennium Hotel come in and want to have almost ninety percent of their taxes abated for twenty years and not pay into the system? When I worked for the License Collector's Office, they, there were so many companies in the city of St. Louis that weren't paying anything. They were just sitting on land, getting police service, getting fire department, using all the city's resources. It's time to hold people accountable. Let's not do this anymore because these people right here... It's time to hold people accountable. Let's not do this anymore, because these people right here want their jobs. And I appreciate and respect them, so that's what I have to say.
Mr. Conover?
I do want to just recognize if Board Member Hubbard has any questions here, that we don't forget her.
Yes, I do have questions and comments, but if anybody else has them, they can go first.
You can go first, Ms. Hubbard, I'll follow you.
Okay. So I very much want to echo what Dr. Collins Adams said about not comparing to Katrina. My in-laws rode out the storm, my husband loves New Orleans to the depths of his soul. It is not the same city. It has profoundly changed. We could not afford to live there now. And I don't want that to happen to St. Louis. So it's not a comparison, it's not a comparison. There, there have to be tornado events that we can look at. And I also echo Ms. Donna. There's so much work and accountability that needs to be shared and taken, I guess. And my third comment is that I would love to know where in the data you collected the small classroom sizes. And I can't remember my fourth thing, but I went to several of those meetings and didn't pick up that, is my takeaway. So I would really love to know what data you used to support that.
Thank you very much for your question. First of all, I'd like to address the Joplin, and you're 100% right, Joplin is not a comparable. We only used it in the terms of methodologies. We looked at it in terms of low probabilities, high probabilities, and some specific migration identification information. Clearly, we had a tornado in Joplin not too many years ago, which, although it was horrific in its own way, is certainly a little bit more regional and closer, and we'll make sure we can get some of that data to share with you as well. To your comment about the classroom sizes, that information was provided to us by the district, so those were the figures that we had been provided with.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah, just to clarify one comment you made there, I think most of the concerns, at least that I heard, were about Katrina. So were you suggesting Joplin might be a better comparison?
I'm not suggesting it's more local. It's the methodology, not the disaster itself. I'm not suggesting that the outcomes, we're only looking at the scientific methodologies by which we measured some of those outcomes.
Great. That's what I want to ask about, so we're in a good spot. But first, I do just want to echo Board Member Jones here, as much as I can, not having the same lived experiences Board Member Jones has, but I think anybody watching this, anybody here listening, should really pay attention to what Donna has to say on these issues, because I think it's incredibly important, and she speaks for a lot of folks in the city, including myself, I hope. I'm going to ask wonky questions, because that's kind of where I'm at as a person, but we'll go less wonky to start. How are you including the community import into the reports in the planning process? So you mentioned the class sizes, I'm just sort of curious how you're doing what would not be sort of hard data into the soft data side of things, you know, the collaboration there.
So again, community engagement sessions, number one, were data reporting. Community sessions, number two, were a lot of listening. Right now, all we're doing as part of these individual scenarios is reporting on only those key factors. Target utilization, target, target facility condition assessments, and overall target enrollments. So we have not gotten to the point to address your comment about some of those additional soft items. This is just the hard data we're looking at. We have, that will be the next step in the process as we start looking at individual buildings and schools and classrooms and figuring out how those fit within our calculus.
Great, thank you so much. Just a couple, well, maybe not a couple, a few more questions here. Could you just say a little bit more, I have this question in other places, so maybe it'll reduce the number. Are we good, President Collins Adams? We're good? Okay. In terms of predicting the rate of decline for the population of the city, and specifically the population of SLPS, I guess I didn't see how that was being calculated exactly and what we're basing that off of. I mean, yes, there are general population decline in St. Louis, but then it seemed like we were sort of predicting constant population decline for the next seven years or something like that. Just a little bit more on that would really be helpful.
Demographics is art and science.
Yeah, for sure.
So we start with census data, we look at American Community Survey data, we look at more localized information, we look at housing permits, new starts, occupancies. We look at specific trends, we look at where those students are, we look at the age, we look at income information. We look at literally scores and scores of data points. When we do a demographic analysis, we don't run one. In some cases, we might run 20 or 30 different valuations. We'll then weight those with our demographer, and we'll come up with an average. And what we've presented to you is that average of those multiple iterations of those demographics. Some of those are, have, show a much less steep decline in overall population. Some show a whole lot more. So what we tried to do was to, was to be smart about what we see and what we know. Let's be candid, the city of St. Louis and the St. Louis Public Schools have stresses. We've got politics, we've got, we have charter schools, we have potential school choice, we have parochial schools. There are a number of different alternatives for parents to send their students. We tried to weigh those different factors and come up with a reasonable expectation in terms of census building.
I'd like to add that in lieu of what Steve just said, what those graphs don't respond to is the fact that as the school district gets more competitive and the schools get better, more people will want to stay here and go to school, so you can have a positive impact on those numbers by making the right choices.
Now we're talking, yeah, great. No, that's very helpful. I don't know if you can provide the different models that you made here in terms of the 20 or 30, it sounds like, demographics reports? I would love to see those. I know Mr. Marston and Board Member Hubbard are also very big data wonks, so we would love to look into that a little bit. I was just sort of shocked to see how aggressive that number was, and it sounds like there may be more aggressive numbers, so that's good to know.
Before you ask, Ms.?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're capturing all of the questions, so that when we come back, we can answer those questions.
Yes, great.
Different demographic models, is that what I heard?
Yeah, so they mentioned that there were about 20 or 30 demographic models that they averaged, and some were more aggressive population decline, some were less aggressive, so just getting a better sense of that.
Thank you.
Of course. You mentioned charter schools there, and I really wanted to ask about that, because at least, you know, I've read this report a couple of times now. I didn't see them specifically mentioned, I could have missed it. How does that relate to the sort of enrollment projections you have? I know a couple of times you said that you had a number of students that was in an area, but not necessarily enrolled in SLPS. So just teasing that out, I think a little bit more specifically would be helpful for me.
So we know the number of school-aged children within the city of St. Louis, within the district boundaries. We know the total enrollment of parochial schools, we know the total enrollment of charter schools. There's no record on homeschooling, that's the way Missouri is. So what we tried to do was to take that total number of school-aged children, extract from that the numbers that we know, estimate some of the numbers that we might not know, and come up with some reasonable numbers to identify what some of those totals and how we can plug those into our demographic model in terms of overall enrollment. One thing I should point out, and I did mention this the last time we spoke, this is not a challenge unique to the city of St. Louis. It's not unique to the state of Missouri, it's not unique to the United States. We have a demographic challenge where there are fewer school-aged children out there. That is just the reality. So to Greg's point, we want St. Louis Public Schools to be the destination. We want that to be where students choose to be, and we can increase that overall percentage. The challenge is, we have fewer students to start with. 20 years ago, that may not have been the case. 20 years from now, it may still not be the case. But the demographics today, again, locally, regionally, and nationally, we just have fewer kids, and that's our biggest driver right now.
I'm a college instructor by trade, so I hear you loud and clear on that one. Yeah, in relation to that, and you kind of mentioned it there, you, you know, we're not entirely unique in the situation we have. I think both Board Member Jones and others spoke to the unique situations that we do have. But I'm curious, when you were modeling this, you know, the population decline projections in relation to this and what we just talked about with the charter schools, was there another city or another system that you were like, they made a similar sort of model here and we're piggybacking off of that in terms of projecting these numbers? Or you guys came up with like a custom model for trying to figure this out?
So we work with, we work with a demographer, a nationally recognized one, who works nationwide. So his models are, the modeling tools that he uses for St. Louis Public Schools are the ones that he uses for cities, schools, and universities throughout the country. So it's not unique to the city of St. Louis nor the state of Missouri, but rather, these are nationwide modeling tools. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, I guess presumably, right, you wouldn't, our city is much smaller than Chicago, so that might not be like a perfect, right modeling, I'm just wondering how that got factored in, that kind of thing.
I can, let me get some additional information. I'm not sure if I can answer it at this moment, but I can certainly get back to you, the superintendent, with that.
I appreciate it. This should be an easy one. In relation to the walk radiuses, I couldn't tell if you mentioned one and a half or a half mile, and then the slide seemed to indicate a mile radius. What was the radius being?
The intent is, it was a one-half mile diameter, one-mile radius.
There we go, okay.
And it was just intended to illustrate, it's not, it was not intended to be the distance by which students do or don't get transportation, but rather, it's a geographic boundary. Every school has an attendance zone, we wanted to be able to illustrate a geographic boundary. We recognize that there are roads and bridges and all kinds of things that impact that, but for GIS mapping purposes, it's always good to have something.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and that was pretty much merely a clarification question, so thank you. You've answered my question on the census sources. On the chart on 28, the sort of logic map, and this also relates, I guess, to basically all the slides through, like, 28 through 36. I understand, I'm going to use logic very loosely here, as a sometimes logic professor, logic here, like, pretty loosely. How were these likelihoods determined about like, okay, if they answer yes to these three questions, they're in the high bin, if they answer two out of three, they're in the medium and the low? And is that based on, again, some sort of national model or some sort of scoring system that is well respected?
So without using a hurricane, what we looked at was, what was the historical data for that and others? What we were able to identify was year-over-year data for, for instance, how many students attended a district, whatever that event might be. What we were able to track historically through specific events, and it was more than one, we looked at those that had a low likelihood to leave the district. Those were folks that basically, they might have relocated, but they finished their school year either at their school or at a school within their district. We also looked at those students that might have had to relocate, but they did not get a chance to return that same year, but maybe they returned the following year. And then we also looked at those students and families that may have left for the year or even two years, but yet they never returned. So when we looked at likelihood, one of the things we're trying to track is, where are they immediately after the event? And then what is the likelihood over the short and the near term of them returning? Not only to their original school, but also to their district itself. Because sometimes they might, they may move into Midtown, they may move up into Normandy. Those are things that we try to track and have a better understanding of.
No, that's helpful, and I imagine there's quite a bit that goes into the likelihood calculation there, but any more clarity that can be provided in the future on that, I think would be very helpful. Just going to go quick, I think most of the other questions I haven't been answered. I'm going to skip one wonky question. Can you talk a little bit more, so there was a $1.85 billion number in relation to if we don't do anything, the cost that we would incur? And then the big savings number was 182 million. How should we be feeling about that, because there's a $1.67 billion difference there?
It's data. So what we're looking at, two different data sets. The first one is, we're looking at 68 schools. 68 schools over a 20-year term, we're basically looking at every single 1,600-plus all the tornado data points, and we've identified those in our cost database, and we've categorized those. We've then escalated those year-over-year at 7%, and we came up with 1.8 billion. The smaller value is for those 37 schools, which are subtracted from the 68, which currently do not, that are not required to meet the utilization targets that we are providing. So we took those 37 aggregates, there's no list, there's no school, it's just an aggregate, and we looked at those year-over-year from today, actually, it was from when the survey was conducted last year, through that 30, 31. So the difference is, it's a smaller subset of schools, but most importantly, it's a much smaller subset in terms of duration. We're only looking at five years as opposed to 20 years. And the cost of escalation, as you can imagine, over that kind of scale is significant.
Yeah.
And I also point out that this is the delta.
Good, yeah.
So it's not the costs that the district would incur for the 31 schools that would be meeting those utilization requirements, but it's the cost of those 31, subtracting the savings from the 37, that's where your delta lies. So again, it's a number, it's data, that's what the information shares with us.
No, and I think the voiceover there is extremely helpful for folks to, myself included, to help better understand those numbers. Just the last question, and I'm unfortunate that it's the last question. Am I understanding correctly, you all have done this report for us, which is, again, very helpful for us, but then also you would be part of the folks who would bid to do the renovations? Is that right?
So currently, we have a contract with the school district for Prop S.
Yes.
So our contract currently involves capital projects, we have a separate contract for master planning. These are two separate contracts. Does that help answer that question?
Yeah, I guess, you know, it's just, there would be a bit of a perception that, like, telling us all the things, you know, that are not going so well, and then like, also then being the ones who would fix them, puts us in a bit of an awkward position, but it doesn't sound like it's exactly like that.
All of our agreements with the district have all been presented and approved by the board. Full transparency. The master planning process, the facility condition assessment. Actually, the facility condition assessment has actually been invaluable in working with our partners at Navigate in terms of identifying what those projects are for Prop S. So really, in an ideal situation, you want to make sure you've got the master plan going on in combination with your capital improvements
Yes.
to identify what those specific projects might be.
No, and heard, and I'm just making sure I understand the sort of situation as it is, and no questions about the transparency you all have had with the board in relation to this, so yeah, thank you.
And just to be clear, collectively, the organization we work for has done 7,000 schools.
Yeah.
So it's in our wheelhouse to do these things, and in fact, have repurposed some of them to provide housing to neighborhoods where the schools were located. So there's a lot of skillset stuff we can bring to bear on this. And by the way, to put a lot of this in another kind of perspective, another kind of perspective, is that the $1.85 billion does not give you schools ready to teach kids.
Right.
It just stops them from falling into the ground. It doesn't give you the resources that the kids actually deserve to have day-to-day in terms of how they learn. So I think you've got to kind of look at the broad view here and make the right decisions to get past them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do want to, yeah, I do want to share that in speaking with the city, they did, they have a neighborhood redevelopment committee, and they said that they are looking to have St. Louis Public Schools at the table to, you know, have our voices heard, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, and thank you for answering our questions very quickly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank our audience for our...
I do want to just share that, you know, as you all walked in this evening, you may have seen some big, bright, yellow buses outside. Those are our Zoom buses that will be transporting our students to school, to and from school, and to their activities beginning August 18th. And I'm just so proud of the team that pulled that together, Mr. Watson and his team and the task force, the principals, the teachers, everyone who came together for the sake of our students to just do what we need to do to make sure that they have transportation next year, so thank you all.
Thank you. Can we get a transportation update? Thank you. Can we, uh, get a transportation update in the August meeting as well in relation to this? Thanks so much.
Yeah, it was wonderful seeing all the buses and I peeped on the inside. They're, they're phenomenal. As we move on to our con- section twelve, our consent agenda items. Well, we have many tonight, so, and there are several that will be pulled for further discussion. Consent agenda items, twelve point one through twelve point four zero. I need a motion on the floor.
Sorry.
Two. Seventy-one. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Oh, yeah. I'm gonna pull out the others. Thank you. Just to move. Okay. It's been a long night so far. Grace, I'm fumbling through paperwork. So it's, sorry, twelve point one through se- twelve point seven-one. Are there any questions?
I have just sort of a comment. And, um, again, just for the, for the audience, I'll note that, uh, started out on July seventeenth, the afternoon of July seventeenth, we had twenty-three consent agenda items. And then by that night, we had fifty-seven. And then on the twenty-first, we had sixty-six. And by the evening of the twenty-first, we had sixty-eight. So, and some of the numbers have moved around. So if there's confusion about the numbering, or, um, for me, anything that was added after, I think, uh, twelve point five-five, that was, would have, I think, got added after Thursday night. So I might have additional questions during the open session, cause between, uh, you know, by the, when they, between when they were added and now, I haven't fully reviewed all of them. Um, but I did, uh, just wanna make a comment on ten point, no, it was ten point thirty-nine, it's twelve point thirty-seven. Now, twelve point thirty-seven, which is a St. Louis Community College dual enrollment, uh, consent agenda item. I just wanted to say that the Early College Academy is a phenomenal program, and in particular, I wanna give a shout out to Kate O'Keefe.
Are we taking questions now on consent agenda? I'm sorry, that was unclear.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was still flipping through to be able to get all the numbers.
Yes, we, yes, okay.
Mr. Conover.
Um, I have a few questions and then a few requests to move items as individual items for action for the, um, I guess it's August eleventh. Do I have that right? Uh, twelfth, thank you, August twelfth meeting. Um, I'll go questions first. So twelve point eight, sorry to bother you over there, Mr. Watson. I have some questions for you. In relation to this question, uh, this number, this is for basically all of the, like, buying of tools and maintenance supplies and everything that will be done throughout the entire year for the operations department. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And these are numbers that are small enough where it's not something we would put an RFP out for, like, buying three hammers or something like that. Is that right? Normally?
So, no, this is just for our replies, supply, supplies, repair and equipment. So these items using over seventy vendors, um, that we utilize for the remainder of the year.
Yes, the, the operations folks, like, go out and they need stuff and they buy what they need, and then that's what gets added to the vendor list. Okay, thank you for clarifying that, uh, for me. I appreciate it. Um, for item twelve thirteen, I'm trying to keep up, as Mr. Marston said, with the number changes, uh, moving relocation and storage. Is this all in relation to the tornado damage schools?
Uh, no.
Okay.
So this is just separate, just in terms of, um, uh, using a moving and storage company to, to just do some of the, particularly with the heavy lifting. However, these companies will be utilized for, uh, the moving that, that was due to the storm.
Understood. I guess just for my clarity, was this an anticipated cost or something that, I mean, it may have gotten added to, but was it an anticipated cost in the budget before the tornado?
So this has been for the past number of years, we've utilized this company. Um, and we generally have, uh, a threshold of just five hundred thousand. We did go through the RFP process.
Great.
Uh, so this is actually, uh, one, one of the vendors, I'm sorry, this is actually renewal. But, um, in the past, I think last year, we did do an RFP, but I can get you that information in terms of, um, going through the process and how these vendors were selected.
That would be great, thank you. I heard this was, uh, routine, but, uh, often things on the consent agenda aren't, so I'm glad that we're having this discussion. Um, and then in relation to twelve sixty-nine through twelve seventy-one, um, were these all RFP and rebid? Cause I, I think they're mostly contracted extensions. I know Mr. Marston, uh, notified the board that he just went through the training and we, we understand the importance of the process of rebidding contracts. So I was just wondering if sixty-nine through seventy-one were rebid.
So twelve point sixty-nine through seventy-one, those are just contract extensions. Um, so the contract ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the work is still ongoing. So this is just to extend the contract so we will be able to pay.
I understand. Thank you so much. Um, okay, I would like to request that items thirty-nine, hope I'm tracking these correctly, forty-three, forty-eight, and fifty-one be removed as individual items for action on the August twelfth board meeting.
Can you restate those?
I can. Let me know. Okay, thirty-nine? Forty-three? Forty-eight? Fifty-one? And that's it.
Additional discussion? Mr. Marston?
I think items twelve, uh, point forty-three and twelve point fifty-eight are duplicates. They're both about the cell phone policy.
Can you repeat those numbers?
So it'd be consent agenda, agenda items forty-three and fifty-eight, I think are duplicates.
So we just need the one removed, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, you can, uh, I guess you can pick which one.
Yeah, exactly. I'll take forty-three, yeah. Thank you. Um, I did have one more, and, and this should be, I think, a pretty neutral question. Um, I'm excited about, but don't fully understand what is going on with the community partner pharmacy one, twelve fifty-five. Um, I really just love some voiceover about, it seems like a great project, but I don't fully understand it from the bar report. So I don't know if anybody can help us out with that. Yeah.
So this is another partner that will help us reach the capacity to provide the resources that we need for our students. Sometimes we have students that, like, we talk about food deserts and other things, they can't, they have medication deserts, there's parents that can't afford some of the inhalers and the EpiPens and things like that. So this will be a partner that will help to provide some of those things free of charge for students who have a consent.
Ah, okay. That, I thought that's what I was getting, but I just wanted to make sure, cause it seems like a great thing. I just wanted to make sure I fully understood. Are they, am I reading correctly that there's gonna also be some, like, medical related training for students as well? Is that right?
Yes, so if there's a student that has to use the EpiPen and things like that, they'll provide that additional information for them as well. So if they're in a situation where they're away from school, they still know how to provide that care for themselves if they have those matu- materials at home.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, just wanted a little bit more information there, so thank you.
Additional? Mr. Marston?
Yes, uh, just back on, uh, July seventeenth, on the evening, I think it was a Thursday, when we had fifty-seven consent agenda items. Just wanted to note that twenty-five out of those fifty-seven were for community partnerships in addition to other memorandums of understanding with other partners. And I just wanna say thank you, uh, to all of those partners. We really appreciate it.
I don't see any more microphones on, uh, no more lights. Okay. A motion to move this to our August meeting?
I'll make a motion to move the consent agenda as amended in this discussion, uh, to the August twelfth, uh, yeah, meeting, board meeting.
Second.
Discussions on the motion? Roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard has left us. Um, Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I need to clarify the items that, Mr. Conover, that you moved would be items for discussion or items moved?
Uh, I believe there'll be items for action, cause there will, I, I understand them to be things that we need to vote on, but I just want to consider them individually.
Got it, thank you. Section thirteen, items for discussion. Item thirteen point one, amend the board resolution.
Um, I have a, a question about thirteen point one. Uh, and again, this was added fairly recently, so I, although this, uh, from, it looked like it was just a, a two-page board action report, uh, for a two point nine million dollar, uh, allocation for a Corderan and Clark's contract. And I was wondering what the scope of the contract is, or sort of which work this is for.
Mr. Watson?
Sorry, Mr. Watson, could I just add on the scope of work for the Greis Rivers, uh, contract as well, since the suggestion is we'll be replacing that? So just to add to Mr. Marston's question.
I'll, I'll start with the Greis Trivers contract. Uh, initially, um, they were, they had a service order for restroom upgrades. It include ADA upgrades as well as auditoriums. Um, and due to, uh, just some, some questions, um, around the deliverables, we have canceled the contract with Greis Trivers. And as a result, um, Corderan Clark, who we had an existing contract with, has picked up some of these projects. So what this particular, um, bar represents in, in terms of additional scope of work includes the addition for the auditoriums. Uh, some, there were some additional renovations to the CVPA and Collegiate Project, which included some of the restroom upgrades. In addition to, um, additions to renovations at Gateway STEM, as well as the auditoriums, which were, again, was reduced from or, um, removed from the previous Greis Trivers. And then some of the feasibility studies that we, that was presented tonight in terms of the facility master plan were all inclusive of the, uh, additional two million, two point, eight million dollars request for two point five. I'm sorry, I don't have it. Let me pull it up.
Two point eight.
Two point eight, seven, five, eight, nine, one.
For, for, so it was offset. So we reduced Greis Trivers. Um, there were approximately, let me pull the document up.
So while you're pulling that up, so the Greis company would, um, were reducing their services, but not totally canceling their contract? They just won't do some of the other things that they've, um, committed to doing, and we're gonna cancel that portion of that contract? Will they still be working with us?
So they completed their scope of work in terms of, of the restroom renovation. So, uh, now that their, that project is done, um, we, we've closed them out.
Got it.
And as a result, we did reduce their scope of work, their dollar amount, and offset it by, uh, continued some of these projects such as the auditoriums, um, CVPA and Gateway STEM.
And those were things that needed to be completed anyway?
Yes.
That were previously, got it.
So just on following here, we transferred a scope of work from one client to another. Is that something that, I guess there might be some immediate needs here, so I'd just love a little voiceover as to why we wouldn't rebid out that scope of work?
For particularly like auditoriums?
Well, so I guess my understanding, based on what you said, is that Greis Trivers was doing X, Y and Z. They did X and then we did not have them do Y and Z, right? And so, uh, now we're giving Y, or the suggestion is that we give Y and Z to Corderan Clark. But it seems like, from what I know about board practice, that normally we would rebid out Y and Z. Uh, so that's what I'm asking about, yeah.
So for the service order, particularly outside of the restroom renovations, it was never, um, it was never executed. So the service order for the restrooms was execute, executed and completed. The additional task orders or service orders, um, which they were in all of the firms in terms of, like, we had a toolkit. So we decided that they were gonna do these, these projects. Um, from this toolkit, we could utilize any of the architectural firms. So once we, and they were approved, so the Greis Trivers, Corderan Clark, um, were the two firms that we approved initially. We also have another toolkit of, I think there are seven, seven additional firms. At any point in time, if the district wants to, uh, have some s- service for whatever those, whatever the project may entails, we could at that point utilize any of those firms to give us, and it depends on, you know, the.
No, that's very helpful. So what you're saying is, we had X, Y and Z. At some point in the past, the board approved both Greis Trivers and Corderan Clark and a number of other firms to be ones that we could select to do X, Y and Z. And all this is saying is Greis, uh, what is it? Greis Rivers, Greis Trivers did X, and now we're just having Corderan Clark do Y and Z.
That is correct.
Okay, that's very helpful, yeah, thank you. Cause in situations like this, it certainly looks like maybe something we would have to rebid. But if there's already been approval for a pot or something like that, that's a bit of a different situation. So thank you.
Okay. We move to our next.
Uh, sorry, quick point order. Superintendent Boroschade, is this something you want us to motion to be on the agenda for the August twelfth meeting? For an a- action item? That's how I'm reading the bar?
Yes.
Okay. I would be happy to make a motion to move the item for discussion, thirteen point one, uh, as an item for action, uh, on the August twelfth board meeting.
Thank you. Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item fourteen on our agenda, items, I'm sorry, yes. These items do not require a vote, vote from the board for visibility, our credit card statement? Discussion? Discussion? Thank you. Items for action, items that require a motion from our board, item fifteen point one, the twenty twenty-five MSBA Annual Conference. I need a motion on the floor.
I guess this is a clarification here. Uh, do we run into any problems with, I guess, board members voting on their own expense reports? I honestly have no idea, so I'm just asking, yeah.
What's the question again?
Is there like any issue with board members voting on their own expense reports? Like, do we have to take this individually? I'm genuinely asking, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Uh, I, we're voting as.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. I'm asking. They're both saying no.
No, we vote as a whole to be able to allow the board to, to approve the board to be able to go to the MSBA and for, um, this Missouri School Board Association Conference for our audience, um, for their annual conference in October twenty twenty-five.
And also trainees.
And training, yes.
I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't, I legitimately was not sure, so, yeah.
I need a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion. My iPad died. I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Ms. Foster, if you wanna jump in, you're more than welcome.
Well, I think I can do it on the wing. I'd like to make the motion for the board to be able to go to the MSBA. conference for the, for the, for the 2025 year, school year. That'll work.
Have a second?
Second.
Additional discussion?
Yeah, just a quick point of, I guess, comment. Uh, I, I'm unable to attend due to work-related reasons. So, uh, in terms of it being for the full board, that's true, but I'm not attending in relation to this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Conover.
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion, roll call?
Ms. Foster?
No.
Mr. Conover?
Epstein.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard? Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Our next item, 15.2, is the EPA membership. The EPA membership is the Executive Professionals Academy. Academy for, I mean, um, for the executive superintendents to the superintendent and the boards of education. For Ms. Vaughn and...
I move to approve of the EPA membership for the executive assistant to the St. Louis Public Schools Board of Education.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. We need a motion now for item 16 to adjourn this meeting and move back to closed session.
I make a motion to adjourn open session of the Board of Education pursuant of, uh, the revised statutes of the state of Missouri 610, 020, uh, for closed session.
Excuse me, I have, um, we have, Ms. Mike Lawton?
Yes. No, they're gonna be moved to items for action for the next meeting, as I specified in the request. Yeah, cause that's what we do with the, it's okay. Yeah.
No problem. So I have a motion on the floor. Do it.
I gotta, it hasn't been seconded.
Needs to be seconded, yeah.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
We are adjourned back to closed session at 9:14 PM.